I'm going to call the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners special meeting for Wednesday, March 25, 2020 to order. We have roll call, please.
We have 10 present and 2 absent.
Let the record show that Commissioners Anderson and Fisher are excused this evening. Commissioner McDonough, would you lead us into prayer and the pledge, please? Now is the time for any public comment on any items on the agenda. Commissioner Morgan. Seeing none, we call for the special meeting was Chief Executive Dave Palmer has called a special meeting of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners for Wednesday, March 25, 2020 at 7:30 PM in the council chambers, Room 312, the Butte Silver Bow Courthouse Building. The purpose of this meeting is to take action upon Communication Number 2020-141. Section 1, Communication 2020-141. Dave Palmer, Chief Executive requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to execute an agreement with the Butte Local Development Corporation regarding a loan program to be funded by the City Counties Anaconda Arco Loan Fund and administered by the BLDC to assist small businesses affected by the COVID-19 pandemic and to authorize the disbursement of such funds. Joe, would you like to talk about it for a second?
Yeah. And I brought Julie as well to provide any additional input, so, you all understand what I'm saying? I'm really careful about what I'm touching these days. Thank you. So with the COVID impact, we've obviously seen an incredible impact on our local economy. We, both Julie, I know all of our staff have spent the last 10 days receiving calls from business owners who are very nervous, they're uncertain about their future, they're uncertain about how long these things are going to last. With the mandated closures on restaurants, bars, now hair salons, the schools, the economic impact is like something we've never seen. I certainly know I haven't seen anything even remotely close to it, and when you think about the only thing that could be even similar would be the '08 housing crisis. It didn't have the impact that this did, and it certainly didn't have the swift immediate impact that this did. And so Julie called me last Tuesday and proposed a use of the funds. We walked through what it would look like, we agreed upon it, we called Dave and said, hey, you know, this is the proposal we want to bring forward to utilize the Anaconda Arco Fund to help support these businesses. The Anaconda Arco Fund, for those of you who aren't aware, is a fund that you guys hold, that the BLDC administers. The fund was established in the early, early 80s. At that point, Great Falls was given $1.5 million, Anaconda was given $3 million, Butte Silver Bow was given $500,000, and we still have $433,000 left, which is a huge compliment to everyone in this room as well as other city staff for the prudent management of it, because with this major emergency, we have a fund that we can tap into to provide immediate assistance to businesses that need it now. And I think that's one of the things I can't understate the impact of enough, is that this is a very urgent, timely thing. We have numerous businesses that might be able to make it a month but probably won't make it past that. We put a survey out this week for business owners, we had 41 responses. The first one, I'll read to you, if conditions continue as is or worsen, how long would you be able to operate? Thirty-one percent of them said less than a month, 48% of them said one to three months. If conditions continue as is or worsen, how much funding would you need to sustain your business for one month? Fifty-three point seven percent of them were less than $5,000. Thirty-four percent of them were in the next range up, which would have been above that, up to $50,000. What we proposed is doing loans at a cap of $10,000 with 0% interest, deferred payments for the first six months. After the first six months, payments need to be made, there would be 2% interest on them, with the total lifetime of the loan being 36 months. What we envision this is, is a program to get funding into these businesses that need it absolutely the most to gap them for when federal relief is coming. The stimulus bill made big steps forward today, I haven't, we've been, I haven't been staring at much social media or anything, the news to get the update, but if it goes forward, federal dollars will come forward. We spent last week on a call with all of our congressional delegation, and it was them, not their representatives, and shared the needs we have, which are putting money into the existing programs we have. The BLDC operates the SSBCI Fund, which was a loan fund established in the '08 crisis, and getting more funds into there so we can get them onto the streets now, as well as developing programs to get grant funds to our businesses. Those are going to be the two most impactful things for our business community. What we're asking for tonight is really providing that gap and helping ensure that these businesses can make it a month, or two months, or three months, so that when federal relief does come, they're in a position to take those dollars and continue forward. As part of this package, we propose absolutely no administration fees, there's not a dollar of this money that's going to stay inside the BLDC. It'll cost us money to administer this program, which we're 100% comfortable with, we think it's incredibly important. We will also be hopefully turning these funds into match for an EDA program that could potentially leverage up to another $800,000 to a million dollars, $800,000 to a million dollars. It's going to take some tweaking because of the regulations on it, but we're going to be submitting an application for that as well. It would not be funds that would be able to come in at this type of interest rate, but it would be more funds to be able to put on the ground. I think from our organization standpoint, that's one of the things we will see through the stimulus bill, is more loan funds to support small businesses. It's just that matter of time that it takes to get these projects going now. With that, I'm open to any questions you guys may have about the structure, or timeliness, or any of it, and Julie's available as well.
Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Joe, I too agree that, you know, a lot of these Main Street USA, the small businesses need a lot of help right now. But also my concern is we still have to be diligent with the funds also, you know, so are you going to be doing any kind of due diligence to, you know, to the funds, and how long will it take to get the funds out?
Yes, Commissioner Sorge, that's one of the most challenging parts of this, is we want to be able to deploy the funds rapidly, but we want to make sure we are doing due diligence. We loan out about a million bucks a year, so we're very experienced with lending. We took our loan application and pared it down to the essentials, so credit report, business financials, and the items that we need to be able to assess whether a business will be able to repay us or not. In terms of timeliness, if this were to be approved this evening, we were notified that we would have funds this week. We would launch the application tomorrow at noon, we would launch marketing for it at about 8:00 AM so people are aware of it, and leave it open until Monday evening for the initial round. Our idea is to leave it open until then, get your application in prior to 5:00 PM Monday. If applications come in after that and additional funds are available at some point from any source, then we can look at those applications when the time is, but we anticipate being able to write checks by the end of next week.
Follow-up, Commissioner Sorge.
Just a follow-up comment. Joe and Julie, thank you for taking this on.
Absolutely, it's been a team effort, and I applaud Julie, she was a commercial lender before coming to us, and having that expertise on staff is huge.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Joe. Joe and I have been in conversation on this. I'm on the loan committee at the BLDC, and I've also, for 14 years, been looking at the Arco Fund, you know, report, and there was never a lot of activity on it, really. There's only three accounts on there now that are, you know, paying their loans back. But Joe, could you just explain a little bit what the criteria was to even qualify for a loan with the Arco Funds, or and why that hasn't been used more? And then my second question is, is this only going to be for those that were mandatorily closed?
I'll work backwards from that, Commissioner Shaw. No, we don't anticipate it for being mandatory closed. We've been trying to flesh out where that priority is, and that is definitely a priority point, because businesses that haven't been mandatorily closed have the opportunity to still make some revenue. Businesses that have been forced to shut their doors have no options right now. And we wanted, we've been working internally to figure out what that's going to look like. Our panel that we've proposed would consist of myself, Julie, our loan officer, Holly Carpenter, likely two of our board members, including Bill Keighley, and then we requested that there be two commissioners as well, since it is your guys' funds. It was recommended to us that we have the two members that do serve on our board, which would be Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Morgan. So that's how we look about approaching that portion of it. In terms of the Anaconda Arco Fund, the reason we haven't utilized it as much is we've had available loan funds, and so having to utilize those funds versus existing funds that we have, a significant portion of our funding is borrowed money. So we have seven IRPs, intermediary relending program loans from USDA that we borrow at 2% and then relend, and that interest serves as a operating capital for our organization. And so in order for those loan funds to function, you have to have that money churning, otherwise it just sits there, and each of those funds is about a million dollars, and we owe that back to USDA. So in order for our organization to exist, we have to be making those loans, so we are always trying to use those funds versus coming to you guys to use the Anaconda Arco Funds. And we've been in a position where we haven't had to come make that request. That being said, loan funds are going to get very tight until these stimulus dollars come through, and so I can definitely see more activity moving that direction in the future, depending on the timeframe of those funds coming to us.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Manquins.
Thanks, Joe, for being here, and thanks for what you and Julie are doing right now. When you talk about the money, you're looking at about 45 businesses. How many businesses have come out to you and asked for, that have done your survey?
We had 41 businesses respond to the survey. We intentionally left it anonymous because we didn't want people to be afraid to fill the survey out. Surveys are a weird thing, people, response rates are never what you want when it's anonymous, it's typically better. I know I've spoken, I couldn't honestly tell you how many, how many have you spoken to, Julie?
In here alone, I've spoken 62 businesses.
It's been, I mean, my phone has not stopped ringing, and I know from trying to call Julie, nor has hers.
So then, so with that, then, with those, I mean, we're looking at 45 businesses, are we going to deplete this fund completely?
The request that we made was for $200,000, and so if everybody asked for $10,000, which is what we anticipate, we'd be assisting 20 businesses. That's been another big challenge for us. I mean, this is a truly unprecedented thing, and I personally don't, I think we will have more requests than the $200,000.
Yeah, and that's kind of the misnomer that's out in the public right now, that everybody thinks that they're going to get this stimulus, $10,000, anybody that applies to it, but depending on what your rubric or what your committee is going to ask the tough questions and make the tough decisions on this. So I commend you and Ms. Shays, and Mr. Morgan, and everybody else on this board. So thank you.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Again, great, it's a great idea, and appreciate you guys' time and what you're doing here. Question being on, you know, depending on the amounts, I mean, if everybody goes at $10,000, is that going to be the request? Or are you going to say, hey, we can't give you 10, but we can give you five? Or, with that being said, your criteria is of your, obviously, financial statements, credit report, you're going to have a certain, I mean, if you're 620 and under, you don't qualify, or you're going to, you know, I mean, what?
We're not going to have a hard and fast rule with credit scores when it just comes to like, this is the level that you're not eligible. With these uncertain times, we think that that would be a little too restrictive for just that one factor. We're also a risk lender, I mean, all the loans we do at the BLDC, we don't just pull off a credit score or your financial statements. We're trying to develop the scoring so that it gets to the businesses that need it the most, the ones that are absolutely in that pinch, that may not survive through a month, that is certainly a priority, and we're discussing those all the time to see how it's going to, how we can best serve the business community.
And if I can just add to that, something we talked about was, you have to speak to your banker first, you know, so if you're able to qualify a credit issue, we'd like to utilize that source. We want these funds to be there, because this is the really the gap between getting full-time loan from a long-range help and the ones that can't get that. So that's something that is right on the application, and we spoke with your banker, and we made all other pubs available to be utilized, because I think it's going to make a difference for lots of small businesses that right now can't get that funding, or for working their bank to be secure. We also made it so that they can't purchase equipment, and they can't pay that money in debt. So they can't take the money and let it pay off a bank, or maybe something they bought two months ago, they can use the pro operations, have the capital available, over it.
And no personal expenses either.
Thank you. No, thank you, that clarifies a lot. And again, you guys are, you're in a tough position on that of, when you, good luck on the gates, when you open the gates on that. But don't call in sick, it makes, I hope you're there, and good luck, and it'll be great, and it's a great thing for the community, I just cheers if you need any help.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fredericksen.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I was hoping to get Director Gleason's input, if she would like.
Commissioner Fredericksen, Chief Executive Palmer, just to add to a couple questions and some clarification here, and some of it's been stated here, but the loan funds have been on the books since 1980s, like Joe said. The funds have revolved around many, many times, so it's not like they sat idle forever. They've been used as kind of like the last piece of a pie to complete a project or whatnot. The last one was the McKenzie River Pizza that was just built out there. So some of the new commissioners that are on board, the whole idea is to get the money back in, revolve it back out, earn interest while it's sitting there, it doesn't just sit idle, we do invest it as we can. Of course, we can't do a lot of aggressive investing. Also wanted to touch a point that Julie just brought up too, that it's always been encouraged that the money be used after individuals have, and companies have gone to banks to seek funding first, and it's kind of like that last resort money there often, which not, this will not be the case, because we're trying to help these businesses out just in that short period of time, till they get some additional federal funding. But it always tended to have a higher interest rate on the loan, just so we weren't in competition with the banks or other lenders that were out there. So, you know, again, just wanted to point out a few things, especially for some of the new commissioners that have never seen this brought forward to them. The BLDC has always been really aggressive. Chief Executive Palmer and I, and County Attorney Joyce had a lot of conversation on what this would look like, because we've always wanted the BLDC to be aggressive to collect those funds so that they were always available to be turned around, and they're going to do their due diligence as best they can to collect these funds. I think the rates and the ability for the borrowers to come in, that, you know, we've given them a good opportunity, and I think Chief Executive Palmer, his leadership on this has been really good too. I think Joe could add to that, that the way that he, his ideas that he brought forward in some of his first conversations with trying to help the businesses out during these tough times, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. You know, seeing that these were, you know, the reason that the Butte Silver Bow, or the commissioners are kind of having this in, because they're public dollars, you know, compared to what a lot of the other ones are, a lot of the other funds. So saying that, somewhere down the line, we should have an accounting also, you know, maybe a year from now or whatever, of, you know, how we, on how, where we're at on those funds, and, you know, how we've collected, and most of the loans are probably, you know, are probably in second position, maybe third position on collections, you know, most of them you probably won't be able to first, but would this have to be accounted for, back to the commissioners?
Danette.
Chief Executive Palmer, Commissioner Sorge, I'll touch based on our part and the county's role in that. Every month, they contribute, or they give us a spreadsheet to our county auditor of the collections they've made, along with the check for the principal, and now there's zero interest, but eventually if there's interest tagged on to them, that comes to us every month, and we get that collection actually before the BLDC gets their payment for us for administering the loan program, kind of simultaneously, but we work hand-in-hand in trying to get those collections. I'll let him talk about the positioning and whatnot on the loans.
Yes, since these are a smaller amount, we've proposed them to be secured by a personal guarantee, we're not planning on taking collateral on them. It's trying to find that balance of doing all the diligence that we normally would for a loan, while also building the plane while we fly.
Thank you, Joe. Good luck.
Thank you. And I would add on, yes, without Chief Executive Palmer, this would be dead in the water, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Now, thanks to our cameras, I realize how thin I am on top. At this time, I would like to make a motion that we approve Communication 2020-141 and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve Communication 2020-141 and place the communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote after John votes? Okay. Will the clerks please record the vote?
We have 10 ye and 10 ye.
Motion carries. And before we adjourn, I would just like to let the council know that our health officer, Karen Sullivan, did extend the order for closures this afternoon about 4 o'clock. I don't know if everyone is aware of them, but it's probably going to put more hardship on this communication you just approved in the loan fund. But I'll just read what is included in this really quick, so everybody knows on the council. All restaurants, food courts, cafes, coffee houses, and other similar establishments offering food or beverage for on-premise consumption; alcohol beverage service businesses, including bars, taverns, brew pubs, breweries, microbreweries, distilleries, wineries, tasting rooms, special licenses, clubs, and other establishments offering alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption, with the exception of drive-through, delivery, and pickup services. Also cigar bars, health clubs, health spas, gyms, dance studios, and classes, aquatic centers, pools, and hot springs, indoor recreational facilities, movie and performance theaters, nightclubs, concert halls, bowling alleys, bingo halls, and music halls, churches, and church services and groups, funerals, graveside services, and memorial services are allowed with congregants of 10 or fewer attendees who are spaced at least six feet from each other. Casinos, body art establishments, hair, cosmetic salons, barber shops, and all massage services except those contained within state-licensed physical therapy or chiropractic practices. This started at 4:00 PM today and runs through April 10, 2020. And this is a changing scenario out there, and it's liable to change tomorrow, and more could be added, or we're getting more cases in the state of Montana, just last Friday we had 17, I believe, and now we're up into the 60s, so it's coming up fast, and we're getting hit hard, and anything could happen in the very near future, so just stay tuned, and we'll go from there. Commissioner Morgan.
I was just going to say thank you. We really appreciate it, and the decision you guys made this evening will be the difference between businesses closing for good and staying open. We're also the second community in all of Montana to be able to respond this quickly, so your swift decision-making will have a huge impact in Butte. Thank you very much.
And before you make the motion, I would just like to add about our council meetings, you know, as things change and they progress, we're working with the IT Department and council chair to figure out how we're going to continue to have meetings. We may be doing it by, you know, working from home through your laptops, but we will continue to carry on the business of the courthouse, but it may be in a different fashion, so we'll be in touch, and we'll go from there. John.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'll make a motion, we adjourn this one right now.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to adjourn. Anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
(inaudible)
As a heads up, maybe you can easily leave your computers if you have them, so that we can give them updates in case we have to do extra business later, that'd be appreciated. If you don't have them today, drop by the IT department, let's see if we can, thank you.
Okay, see you, Dave.
to order for Wednesday, March 25. Can we please have a roll call? Has everybody checked?
We have nine present, one presiding, and two absent.
Okay, please let the record reflect, Commissioner Fisher and Anderson are excused. We will forego the prayer and the pledges, we just did that with the regular council meeting. I'm going to rearrange the agenda just a little bit, because my report is going to cover any public comments on any items on tonight's agenda. So, report of the chair. As the Chief Executive just announced, we are in a different time of council meetings and such and allowing public input. We've been adapting to the changes as they're being set forth, myself and Commissioner Shaw and Mr. Palmer and the IT Department and County Attorney Joyce and Danette Metten, we're trying to figure out the best way to conduct our business with the Council of Commissioners. And part of that is trying to figure out the best way to allow public input without having, you know, people come into the council meeting and be at risk of COVID-19. So one of the things that we have instituted, if you've read the newspaper today, we developed a method to allow public comment on items that are on tonight or on the agenda, two different ways. One of them being an email address that is public-input@bsb.mt.gov. We've worked with the IT Department, and they've configured it so that Barb Davis or Davies, our council secretary, as well as, I believe, Linda Sager Joyce in the clerk and recorder's office receives these communications. Barb is monitoring them on a daily basis and printing them off as they come in. And as the council meeting starts, she's going to provide me with a folder of those communications, and at that time, as long as everything is in proper form, I have a name of who submitted it, an address of who submitted it, I will read them into the record. I have also asked that people that submit letters keep them short and to the point as much as possible. If you look at the newspaper today, I mean, hopefully we don't have a five-page letter, but if we do, we do, but I would strongly encourage people to just keep it short and simple and get to the point of what they want us to hear. Part of the challenge of just providing an email address is, I understand that not everybody has email, and so we wanted to make sure that we could make an opportunity for those that don't. And so, we wanted to make sure that we could make an opportunity for those that don't. So, if you, if you would like to submit a written communication, an actual letter in paper form, there is a mailbox between the two doors of the courthouse on the east side. It's a wooden box that you're able to actually deposit a letter into that mailbox. I believe Ms. Davis, Davies will be checking that box every day as well and also providing the letters for me to read into the record. So, there's a couple of different changes with that. Again, we just strongly encourage written comments to come before this body. I would encourage all constituents, if it's necessary or if it's better, just reach out to their representative via their email or their phone, however they communicate well with them, and that way their voice is still being heard. I know it might not be ideal, but in these times, we just need to make things work as much as we most possibly can. And I think and I hope that the City of Butte will just continue to work together as we get through this as a community, as a state, and as a nation. And so, if anybody has any questions or they're hearing any concerns, please let me know. We will adapt to the circumstance and move forward. Along those lines, Chief Executive Palmer mentioned today that as things are changing, we may have to move into a more defined at-home council meeting, depending on how things go. I would encourage every commissioner, if you haven't done so, please have IT check out your computer at the earliest convenience to make sure that it's been properly updated, has properly security definitions on it and such. I'm going to try to work with Chief Executive Palmer tomorrow and Kathy Kennison with the IT department to see if we can figure out a way to hold a meeting remotely. And so, I may be reaching out to everybody early part of next week to see if we can do a trial of it to see how it's going to work. I just want to make everybody aware of it. We might run into some challenges. People may have to adapt to using technology they're not used to, but we will, we will prevail in this, and we will figure out a way to make it work. And so, I don't know what that's going to be or what that's going to entail, but just please have patience with us as we make those changes going forward. The other thing that I'm working on and with the county attorney is trying to figure out the best way to streamline our commission meetings so that we have less items on the agenda that maybe aren't as pertinent or as important as others. So, that may include limiting our committee meetings and handling things more as a committee of the whole type thing or as a full, full wide commission. Things may be off the agenda if they're not really pressing. And so, again, please bear with me as we, as we work through this. It's, it's not a decision that I would have to make that your communication isn't, isn't important, it's going to be off the agenda, but right now, it's something that we have to all consider and, and work together on. So, you might see some of those changes coming up, again, depending on what happens this weekend or next week. So, just, just kind of bear with me. Okay? So, again, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact me, and we'll work through and out, or work through any issues that we need to. Okay? Commissioner O'Neill, I can't really ask any, answer any questions right now, just not the, not the proper time. But we will, we will get this figured out. So, there's my, my report, the longest one ever. The, the next item on tonight's agenda is any public comment on any items that are on tonight's agenda. I don't believe there's any member of the public that is here to speak. We did receive a couple of communications already through the public-input@bsb.mt.gov. So, this is a trial run. I will just read the communications that we have. Again, there will not be any input. This is simply the same way as it was before. The first one is a public comment from R. Edward Banderob, 2601 Grand Avenue, Butte, Montana, residence, resident. Reference number 11, Communication 2020-132, requesting Council of Commissioners to consider drafting a resolution that would amend the Butte Silver Bow Charter. Yes, we do need a change in the form of our local government. First of all, we need the BSB Council of Commissioners to implement clauses 3.03(c, e, and i of the current BSB city-county charter. Then, we need the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners to consider rectifying that when in the current BSB city-county charter, the CEO is designated to be the presiding officer for all regular and special meetings of the Council of Commissioners inadvertently or maybe not so inadvertently. Not only was the city and county governments consolidated, but the chief, but the executive and legislative branches of our local government were effectively consolidated. But there is a third option to what is being proposed, taking the good of both the current charter form of government and the proposed council manager form of government in a matter or, and making a better form of the government by amending the current charter to amend the best parts of both forms. In this article in the Montana Standard, Mike Smith wrote, "A formal effort is now underway to cut the number of Butte Silver Bow Commissioners from twelve to five, to be called city-county representatives, elected at large instead of by districts." As I understand, it, it's the proponents are proposing five full-time commissioners elected at large. We're not going to get qualified people to spend the money to run for the office if they are not paid a full-time salary. That would be five more full-time bureaucratic and non-being responsible, and no one being responsible to anyone, no one being responsible to or representing any neighborhood. Mike Smith wrote in this article that the proponent said a big advantage to having a city manager, he said, is that a person often has college degrees in public administration and experience running cities. Yes, having a CEO with city management education and experience would be an advantage, but our CEO is in effect our current city manager with Butte Silver Bow experience and including the city-county management, education, and experience, and the requirements for the person to run for office would be simple. Or that the manager be hired as an assistant to the CEO, or in that, one of the concerns of the proponents is that the commissioners do not seem to have time to delve into the technical aspects of issues sufficiently, that the manager be hired to work part-time for the CEO, a part-time for the Council of Commissioners. Mike Smith wrote that the proponent said, "Even if a professional manager in Butte made the top salary in the state, $190,000, and pay the four, and pay for five council members, would be about $101,000 less than what commissioners and the chief executive cost now. When I calculate a professional manager at the same $142,000 in benefits as the current CEO and five full-time representatives at the Silver Bow County living wage of about $55,000, each for about $275,000, I come up with an additional cost of about $19,000 a year, not savings of $101, and the people losing control of neighborhood representation to paid bureaucrats." Is one communication. The other communication is from Jeff Gallus, 2701 Phillips Street. Dear Chief Executive Palmer and council members, in the matter of the proposed resolution to amend, amend Butte Silver Bow Charter while eliminating the position of chief executive and replacing our current governing body of twelve sitting representatives with five at-large office holders, I must express my absolute opposition. The citizens of Butte Silver Bow had an opportunity to weigh in on this matter at the ballot box during the last general election in 2016, and I strongly rejected such move. Many in our community see this as a move to consolidate power in the hands of a few and to remove a fundamental check and balances built into the current charter. It is too many viewed as an end-run around the democratic process by those who wish to do by fiat what they did never accomplish at the ballot box. The proponents of the amendment in touting the benefits of hiring a city manager who serves at the pleasures of themselves are comparing apples and oranges while they compare our consolidated city-county to the other cities in Montana. We all want to see efficiency in our local government, but not at the expense of our democratic principles and core values. I will say furthermore, more, that to address such a matter that goes to the very foundation of our representative government at a time of national crisis, when public comment is naturally stifled, making absolutely no sense, this amendment should be abandoned because the people of Butte Silver Bow have already spoken on this, they have rejected it, and if not totally abandoned, should at a minimum be tabled until a cross-section of our people can be heard on this matter under the current rules dictating public comment. The next communication is from R. Edward Banderob, 2601 Grand Avenue, Butte, Montana, Concerned Citizen, Butte Silver Bow Council, BSB Commissioners. I commend the BSB administration. I'm bringing forth Communication number 20-141, requesting a loan program to assist Butte and Silver Bow small businesses. But did I miss something? Were the special meetings, emergency communications requests from the Commissioners requesting and approving $127,000 of emergency funding for equipment supplies and first responder and health personnel planning, preparing, training, practicing, emergency procedures to deal with the coronavirus in Butte Silver Bow. Requesting the Butte Silver Bow government draft and approve an emergency mill levy so our first responders and health providers will have the funds on a contingency basis if needed to subsidize the hospitals, care centers, and health department, set up and operate community isolation centers for those testing positive. If we ever get enough test kits to do the testing that should, or we should be doing and creating and operating isolated treatment wings and/or buildings, they most probably will need to deal with the crisis. Requesting that the Council of Commissioners and the public get weekly detailed updates from the Unified Health Command on what is, what is the local situation and what this local government is doing to prepare and practice as needed to prevent the spread of the virus and treat those who are and may become infected. Requesting our Commissioners discuss the status of the coronavirus situation in our community and what they should be doing to educate, encourage, and lead their constituents to prepare and practice what is needed to prevent the spread of the virus. Is the health of the fish and the economy more important than saving human lives? The next one is from Terry Schultz, 2210 Elm Street. Presently, we have a form of local government that may seem cumbersome and slow to some people. This slowness protects the citizens of Butte from a temporary swing of the Council of Commissioners from right to left or left to right, from quickly changing and/or removing the built-in restraints of the charter. One of the original ideas of a change to nonpartisan offices in the county was to increase the likelihood of Republicans to win local races. The proposed county charter changes seem eerily similar. The latest proposal to reduce the number of Commissioners to five and to elect them at large is blatant attempt for a minority, a well-funded one at that, to control the county government, has now constituted their Commissioners from the Hill, Lower West Side, East Side, Middle, Southwest, Southeast, and the area outside Butte's original city limits are representatives of those citizens in twelve areas, and all get to debate government direction. Under the proposed changes, all five Commissioners could come from one area of the county. As we have seen in our national elections, well-funded candidates have much more name recognition, literally buying their weight into relevancy. Under the present system, five representative, or five represents a minority view on the council, while the, the proposed plan, this same majority voting as block, gets to select a city manager who is answerable to a reduced council, taking away one of the checks and balances of the voters, who now select the chief executive and the veto power he wields. I personally prefer a CEO elected from among the residents of the county and answerable to all the voters every four years, instead of a professional selected by the council of five, selected from a nationwide search, who will leave a better gig when one presents itself. The job, the better job that the professional does, the sooner, or the better the, the job the professional does, the sooner new opportunities arise. Bottom line, the people of Silver Bow deserve to be represented by their neighbor, who is familiar with the challenges of the district in which they live. That concludes the public comment that we've received this week. I apologize for any mispronounced, pronounced, pronounced words-
Give it up.
-that I may have made, so. Next, I will move on to Section 1 Communications, Communication 19-466. Eric Mankins, Commissioner District Number 9, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the chief executive to discuss a change in zoning ordinance requiring community residential facilities as defined by state law to obtain a conditional use permit within Butte Silver Bow County in all residential zoning districts, including R1, R2, R3, R4, S, and RC. As you guys will recall, we do have a Resolution 2020-6, so I would ask that we just cross-reference this communication with that resolution and place this communication on file. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I move to cross-reference Communication 19-466 with Communication 2020-6 and place it on file.
Second.
It's actually Resolution 2020-. Oh. Yeah.
Resolution 2020-6, excuse me.
Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded to cross-reference Communication 19466 with Resolution 2020-6 and place on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay. Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
We have ten ye and zero nee.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Number 2, Communication 19578, Gary Rundle, citizen, requesting Council of Commissioners consideration to purchase property located at 1820 Banks Avenue, Butte, Montana. I wish to redeem the property from Butte Silver Bow before the tax sale in February. We'll continue to hold this one in abeyance. Number 3, Communication 19582, Ed Banderob, Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, requesting Council of Commissioners to invite a Montana DPHHS toxicologist to give a presentation relative to the hazard risks to human health of heavy metal contaminants present in the Butte Silver Bow community. Ms. Sullivan is, is still currently working on this, and we will try to get this before us as soon as we can. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance. Communication 2020-04, Mike Townsend, citizen, requesting Council of Commissioners to consider the repurchase of my home located at 105 West Porfry. I will comply with all the rules and regulations of the county enrichment program. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance as well. Number 5, Communication 2020-102, Karen Sullivan, Health Department Officer, requesting Council of Commissioners to schedule a public hearing on March 18th, 2020, for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 1920 budget to allow for increased expenditures of unanticipated revenue resulting from a grant, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration Health Department Budget We did hold this, so Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to place Communication 2020-102 on file.
Second.
Okay, there's been, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
We have ten ye and zero nee.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Number 6, Communication 20-103, Karen Sullivan, Health Department Officer, requesting Council of Commissioners to schedule a public hearing for March 18th, 2020, for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 1920 budget to allow for increased expenditures resulting from an MOU for community participants to attend disability-inclusive health community summit training by the National Association of Chronic Disease Directors Developmentally Disabled Budget, 2984.00.3311.17.000. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to place Communication 20-103 on file.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
There are ten ye and zero nee.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Number 7, Communication 20-125, Danette Leeson, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council of Commissioners for time on the April 8th, 2020 Committee of the Whole for Opening Proposals for a Private Placement Direct Bank Loan. This loan, in the amount of $1,850,000, is needed to cover costs associated with Phase 1 of the Public Safety Communication System Modernization Project. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance pending the April 8th meeting. Communication number 20-128, Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners for time on the Council of Commissioners, April 1st, 2020, Council of Commissioners Regular Meeting to open bids for asphalt supply or oil supply for the 2020 season. We'll continue to hold that in abeyance. Communication 20-129, Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to hold a bid opening- to hold a bid opening on April 15th, 2020, related to the cell for expansion project for the landfill. Will continue to hold that in abeyance pending that meeting. Number 10, Communication 20-130, Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting council of commissioners to hold a public hearing to be held on April 1st, 2020, Regular Meeting for sole source of solar bees for the Basin Creek Reservoir. We hope to purchase the solar bees in fiscal years 2020 and 2021. Will continue to hold that in abeyance as well. Number 11, Communication 20-132, Jim Fisher, Commissioner District 6, requesting council of commissioners to consider drafting a resolution that would amend the Butte Silver Bow Charter pursuant to the attached certificate Number 2, to eliminate the 12 elected council of commissioners in the elected chief executive positions. Those positions would be replaced with legislative commission consisting of five city-county representatives elected at large by the electors of Butte Silver Bow County, Montana. Commissioner Fisher is unavailable today as he's not feeling well, and he asked that we just continue to hold this in abeyance until he's able to be here to explain it. So we'll continue to hold that in abeyance at this time. Next item is any public comment on any public matter that's not on tonight's agenda. Not seeing any public in the audience, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're gonna need to reconvene the Judiciary Committee meeting for a minute, so if everyone on the Judiciary Committee would just remain seated after this, we'll conduct business quick and then be done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Have a good night.
[laughter]
[inaudible] ...............................................................